Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Housing Authority for October 21st, 2025. May we have roll call for council?
Councilmember Asadurian.
Here.
Brotman.
Here.
Carpetian.
Here.
Kasakian.
Here.
And Mayor Najarian.
Here.
And for the Housing Authority?
Authority member Oginnian.
Here.
Carpetian.
Here.
Kasakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Perazian.
Here.
Brotman.
Here.
And Chair Asadurian.
Here.
May we have your report?
Agenda for the Tuesday, October 21st, 2025, joint public meeting of the City Council and Housing Authority was posted on October 17th, 2025, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And what is the first item?
Item number one, community development regarding approval of establish a full-time, permanent, unclassified housing analyst position, non-general fund in the Housing Development and Preservation Section of Community Development Department. A, Housing Authority, a motion authorize executive director to establish a one-full-time, permanent, unclassified Housing Authority position, non-general fund within Housing Development and Preservation Section. B, City Council Resolution of Appropriation in the amount of $98,891 to fund the housing analyst position.
Mr. Galanian.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor Najarian, members of City Council, Chairperson Sajdian, members of the Housing Authority. Since 2019, our affordable housing portfolio has grown by more than 2,000 units. Therefore, our Housing Section staff is requesting approval to establish one-full-time, permanent, unclassified housing analyst position dedicated to compliance monitoring and administration of this affordable housing portfolio. This position will not be funded by General Fund, but by special housing funds through Home, LMIHAF, and PLHA programs. And the duties of this position will include ensuring full compliance with state and federal housing regulations, timely responses to tenant and property management inquiries, as well as oversight of our annual financial and compliance audits. If you'd like additional and more detailed information, Mike Fortney, our Deputy Director of Community Development, is available to respond to your questions as well.
Thank you. Is it as straightforward as it sounds?
It certainly is.
With no impact to the General Fund?
Correct. Mayor Najarian.
Okay. Mr. Brotman.
I do have a question. So this is not an hourly position?
Correct.
What happens if the Home Funds get terminated next year?
Councilmember Brotman, in that case, because this is an unclassified position, we should be able to let the person leave their employment with the city.
Okay. So we're not locked in? It's not going to then roll over to the General Fund or anything like that? Okay.
Mayor, we do have a caller on this item.
Let's hear the caller.
Oh, thank you. Beth, you have three minutes. Beth, go ahead.
Thank you. Hi. Yeah, my question is just, how did this remain unfunded for six? How did this not happen for six years? I read the summary report and that people were sort of trying to pick up the slack. But why all of a sudden the, and also the affordable housing, uh, number of affordable units, I don't think they increased by 2,000 since 2019. When I looked at the website, because that would mean that we have 4,000 units, because before we had around 2,000. So I don't think we, it increased by 2,000 since 2019. Uh, so I'm not sure where Mr. Galanian got that, that number. But my question is, how did this remain unfunded for, for, for six years? And what was the impact on tenants or on compliance for that? Uh, I just see this as being some sort of an emergency, and I'm guessing it's because we're supposed to get some, you know, county funds, and the county wants to know, what have you people been doing for the past six years about the programs with programs? So that's my only question about, thank you.
Thank you. In general terms, Mr. Galanian, do you stand by the representations made in the report, specifically the housing units, affordable housing?
I do, Mayor Najarian, and members of the Housing Authority. I turn it over to Pamela Jackson, who briefly provide the response to Ms. Brooks's question.
Sure. Good afternoon, everyone. Regarding the numbers, we are counting among that number also workforce housing units. We have 1,475 workforce housing units that have come on board since 2011. We're also counting the newer projects, including Citrus Crossing, Pioneer, Piedmont is included in that number. We have also included, because it's part of the monitoring process, some of the older first-time homebuyer loans and single-family rehab loans that we still have to monitor all these years later. So we triple-checked the numbers, and we do confirm that the portfolio has risen by that amount. The other question was, what have we done up to this time? It's been challenging due to the workload, but we still have reporting requirements that we have met. We have had some staff, over the course of that time, come on board and do the work, but it hasn't been a full-time position. And so we have not had any continuity with it. And so that's the purpose of us getting this, asking for this position now, so that we can stabilize it and continue reporting as the numbers increase.
Thank you. We have one more card or caller. Let's hear the caller.
Fernando, rolled in? Fernando, you have three minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Board of the Housing Authority. One thing I would recommend to this Board, and please, I ask this as a, as a resident of Glendale, and of course, as a person with disability, that this new position or the, or this position, the inhaled housing analyst position, I'd like this also to be included for the rights of people with disabilities to have housing. And two aspects. One, to make sure that we have more apartments and houses that are wheelchair accessible or accessible for blind or deaf or even seniors. That's, that's one. And number two, I would like, and I'm just advising the mayor and the council to at least also have, when forming this project, to also form a group of people with disabilities and non-people with disabilities in the community, as I mentioned before, to make sure that housing is on the agenda for us people with disabilities. And that, as usual, that is my two cents of that, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there?
That was the last caller.
No other speakers?
No other speakers.
Any other questions from council or Housing Authority? Mr. Carpetian.
This $98,000, is this $98,000 per year? Or is it for the remaining of the year? I saw somewhere here it says for the remaining of the year.
It is for the remainder of the fiscal year, once we bring the person on board.
Remainder of the fiscal year that goes until June of 2026.
Correct. That's correct.
So it's about nine months or so.
Mm-hmm.
So for the following year, what would that, that salary be?
Uh, it would be, I don't know if we put that in the report, but it would be, we're anticipating the maximum would be $170,000 per year with salary and benefits. That would be the max. It's a little more than that, but at the max step.
And if we don't have this position, is there any other, how else can we use that $170,000?
Well, it's coming from money set aside from each funding source for administration. So each source allows you to set aside either 5% or 10% for administration. It's not touching any money that would go toward development of affordable housing. So if we didn't use it for this, it would be used for some other administrative issue that came up, I guess, I suppose. That money also goes toward outside council for housing development projects and things of that nature.
I understand. And who's handling this, this position right now? Who's, who's taking care of the business today?
We have, so right now, we have a staff member that has added this onto other duties to fill in the gap.
And are we going to hire from the outside, or are we going to promote from inside, inside the organization?
We will look to promote first, but we will have that discussion.
And again, if the, this funding goes away, you're just going to cancel that position?
It can't be canceled ever, because it is essential in terms of the work that needs to be done, but we would look to funding it through other non-general fund sources for housing.
We have 2,000 units added since 2019?
Yes.
2,000 housing units, okay. Okay. That's a lot. Thank you.
Any other questions on this item? We have a Housing Authority motion. I will move item 1A, the Housing Authority motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Authority member Oginnian.
Yes.
Carpetian.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Perazian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
And Chair Asadurian.
Yes.
Item B is the council resolution.
I'll move the council resolution.
One second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Asadurian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Carpetian.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
And Mayor Najarian.
Yes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item number two, community development regarding acceptance of Measure A Local Solutions Fund from Los Angeles County Homeless Initiative. Authorization to implement pilot project and enter into an agreement with Gateways Hospital and Mental Health Center. A, motion approving the implementation of a pilot project in partnership with Gateways Hospital and Mental Health Center to provide residential care beds and intensive case management services for unhoused and recently homeless individuals, and authorizing the city manager or designate to enter into an agreement with Gateways for a contract amount not to exceed $813,000. Item B, motion approving amendment to the city's contract with Los Angeles County accepting Measure A Local Solutions Fund in the amount of $347,979 for the pilot project, and authorizing the city manager or designate to execute all documents necessary to accept and implement the funding. Item number C, motion approving and amending, or motion approving an amendment to the city's contract with Los Angeles County accepting continuum of care homeless services funds in the amount of $382,021 for the pilot project, and authorizing the city manager or designate to execute all documents necessary to accept and implement the funding. Item number D, resolution of appropriation to appropriate Measure A Local Solutions funding in the amount of $434,979 awarded by Los Angeles County Chief Executive Office Homeless Initiative. And item number E, Housing Authority Resolution of Appropriation to appropriate $83,000 from the Housing Assistant Fund for the pilot project.
Mr. Galanian.
Thank you, Mayor Najarian. I'll just turn it over to Arsene Sayon, our Deputy Director of Community Development and Charge of Homeless Services, for the presentation of this item.
Oh, thank you. Sorry about that. Okay, here we go. I'm here to provide a brief presentation on our Measure A funds. As you all know, the county voters passed a half-cent sales tax measure back in November of 2024. This tax measure, Measure A, went into effect as of April 1st, 2025. Unlike its predecessor, Measure A does not have a sunset date, and it's essentially repealing and replacing Measure H. Under this ordinance, the Measure A ordinance, the annual revenue is expected to be around $1 billion. And under this ordinance, there is a mandatory allocation of 60%. So 60% of this revenue needs to go to the Chief Executive's Office under their homeless initiative team, CEO HI's team, to allocate towards comprehensive homeless services and programs. As part of this bucket of funding, there's also a 15% allocation that is going to go to cities, council of governments, and unincorporated areas under the Local Solutions Fund. So the Board of Supervisors, I wanted to just give you an overview of the total annual revenue, estimated revenue, and where that revenue is expected to go based on the different components and categories of funding. As you can see, about 61%, around $656 million, was approved by Board of Supervisors and allocated under the Comprehensive Homelessness Services. And if you look at the breakdown, about 15%, $96 million was allocated for the Local Solutions Fund, which is what I'll be talking about today. I won't dive into a lot of detail about the other two components, but about $13.4 million will be allocated for the homelessness solutions innovations, and about $10.6 million is expected to go to the accountability, data, and research component of this funding. Though we are not getting any direct allocations under those two categories, we will have an opportunity to take part in the implementation process and have a seat at the table with the county for those programs. The remaining Measure A allocation, I know this was discussed a few weeks back by Sipon Zadurian, about $383 million will be allocated to the Los Angeles County Affordable Housing Solutions Agency, La Casa, and about 3%, which is about $32 million, will go to LACTA, the Los Angeles County Authority. With that said, under the Local Solutions Fund, the city is expected or has received already about $434,000, a little over $434,000, of which $87,000 of that will be kept in-house for administrative expenses, support, and about $347,979 is available to fund various programs and services that align with the county's regional plan that was adopted by the Board of Supervisors. And I'll kind of dive in a little bit into the eligible activities that can be funded through LSF, but I won't go into detail on this slide. I will just cover one key area. As you all know, with the Measure H funds, the county was looking at our latest point-in-time count numbers. With Measure A, they're doing things slightly, it's a little bit different, the methodology. They're looking at the last two years of the PIT numbers. So they're taking an average of a multi-year count. About 90% of the formula is based on that, and 10% is pulled from proxy data, which the American Community Survey, for low-income households. So the county was presented with multiple funding formulas, I believe six or eight, can't recall the exact number, but they ultimately went with this particular formula, which makes it a little bit more equitable, especially for the unincorporated, unincorporated areas that don't have a PIT or have low numbers during the count. All right. Eligible uses, so I'll jump in and I'll kind of summarize this to keep it really high-level. But under the Local Solutions Fund, we are authorized to use the funding for different activities, such as mental health services, substance abuse treatment, inpatient, outpatient, case management and outreach, permanent housing placement, interim housing, and homeless prevention, of course. And the key goals that we have to look out for and have to report on collectively is really increasing the number of people that are moving from encampments and from our streets into permanent housing as quickly as possible. And that permanent housing can be different types of programs, like interim housing, congregate sheltering, some type of a successful program that gets them off the streets and into, into housing. We have to reduce the number of people with mental illness or substance abuse, substance use disorders who are experiencing homelessness, essentially just taking people who are experiencing homelessness off the streets as quickly as possible and making sure that we keep them housed for as long as possible. So reducing that recidivism that I often talk about. And lastly, is to increase the number of affordable housing units throughout the county. So these are just the five pillars, the general goals, that we have to kind of abide by as we're implementing a lot of our local programs here. There is one key element that I wanted to highlight, is all of these programs, regardless of what we do, we must connect individuals to behavioral health services, that's a really big push from the county, mental health services, and mainstream entitlement programs. Making sure that people are connected to these mainstream programs has to be part of any program that we choose to implement under this funding source. With that said, historically, homeless services team, we've had, we've implemented three different types of programs with our Measure H funding. We've brought online more rapid rehousing beds, which is, you know, short-term or medium-term rental assistance. We have also allocated some money to homeless prevention and our outreach efforts here in Glendale. We wanted to pivot this year, since we have integrated with the housing team and we have been speaking with them and trying to collaborate more closely with them to make sure that we don't duplicate some of the same programs that our housing team would like to bring online. I know Sipon did a presentation a few weeks back, speaking with them, we thought we pivot and we bring on a new pilot project that I like to talk to you about today. This pilot project is, would be in partnership with Gateways Hospital and Mental Health Center. It would really help us serve some of our high-need clients, those individuals that we come across on our streets that might be service-resistant and at some point are willing to accept services by our outreach teams. It would also, as I mentioned, reduce the duplication with the La Casa funding, the $5 million that's expected to come in for our housing team, or has already. And it would also streamline the connection with housing behavioral health and supportive services. And this is something that I've talked about often when I, when I present our PIT numbers to council and to the Housing Authority. We do not have a local mental health care provider here. We don't have any contracts or MOUs in place to be able to make out, you know, make referrals out to our local agencies here. So with this potential pilot, this pilot project, Gateways would essentially serve as that bridge between Glendale and access to mental health services countywide. There are three components of this pilot project that I like to discuss. It's the Enhanced Care Management Program, the ECM program. This is a state-funded program that came online through CalAim. These are state funds that are being utilized by our managed care plans, and I'm happy to say that Gateways has secured a contract, and they are now officially an ECM provider. So they would be able to work with all of our clients, whether they're housed in our programs or they're currently homeless in our programs, and get them connected to much-needed intensive mental health services, substance use services. It kind of goes outside the traditional, you know, healthcare system. They really want to be able to serve the community, especially the unhoused community that's experiencing homelessness, and bring that case management to them and meet them where they're at. I'll dive in a little bit deeper in the next presentation, but that's just a general overview. With this project, we're also proposing to bring online five residential care treatment beds. At this time, the beds are not located within our jurisdiction. They're located in Boyle Heights through Percy Village. It's a residential care facility, about 136 beds, and we would be contracting to secure five beds for our city and our outreach teams. Lastly, as part of this pilot project, we will be bringing a one-full-time case manager that would be hired through Gateways to support our emergency housing voucher program households. Those who have high needs are vulnerable clients that need the day-to-day, hands-on, intensive case management and mental health support so that they can maintain their housing, which I'll talk a little bit, about a little bit more. Little bit about Gateways. I actually have the team here today. Phil Wong, the Executive Director, is here today. We also have Dr. Kimberly Guerreira, who oversees the residential care facility at Percy Village. And we also have Richard Lewis here, who is the Business Development Director. And at the end, you know, they're available if you guys have any questions that I'm not able to answer. So Gateways has been around for 70 years. They've been serving the greater Los Angeles area since 1953. They have nine service locations in the county in San Diego, and they serve a wide range of, you know, target populations, anywhere from children, adolescents, transitional-age youth, adults experiencing severe mental illness and substance use disorders. So they have this really neat, multidisciplinary approach where they have a wide range of support from, you know, they have psychiatrists on, onsite, licensed registered nurses, you know, psychiatrists, psychiatric nurse practitioners, and so on. So they have this full service that's available onsite to be able to help our, our outreach programs and our, and our clients and our programs. Again, ECM, I wanted to just give you guys some information through this program. We will be able to enroll all of our clients, whether they are currently housed or unhoused, and there will be community-based case management, linkages to primary care and mental health and substance use disorder treatment, which I touched on already. So all of these services will be at no cost to the city. The ECM portion of this is all leveraged through Gateways, through state funds, which is a huge benefit for our clients and our programs. And it also allows the city to look at other opportunities. I often come to council and I talk about our continuum of care program that we apply for competitively each year. And one of the reasons we have not been able to bring on any new projects, permanent supportive housing projects, is because we're missing this critical piece, a partnership with a mental health care provider. If we are to be able to successfully secure this partnership, we could look at other funding opportunities in the future to bring online more permanent supportive housing beds. Just very briefly on the residential treatment beds, so these will be five treatment beds that will be available for our, for example, Glendale Police Department outreach team and Essentia outreach teams. They will provide mental health treatment, wraparound services to ensure long-term housing stability, and work day in and day out with our outreach teams to, A, identify our clients here in the city, our individuals, and rapidly get them placed into these treatment beds. The daily rate is about $400 a day. The program duration that we're proposing is one year for now, so we can evaluate the effectiveness of the program, and then, you know, if we can, then we can continue to extend the program. The total cost will be around $730,000, and the funding source that we are, would like to use is the Local Solutions Fund, the $347,000, plus our existing Measure H contract. So I wanted to note that in addition to the Measure A Local Solutions Fund that we will be getting each year, that allocation, we still have our Measure H contract, which is now called the Continuum of Care Measure A Contract. This contract will not come to an end until 27, 28 fiscal year. So we'll be getting two allocations. I won't dive, I think I already mentioned that we'll be hiring the mental health and substance abuse case manager. I did want to be a little bit more specific here. This case manager will solely concentrate on the 25 households that we identify in the Emergency Housing Voucher Program. They'll be working with them to assess their needs, develop individualized case management plans, get clients linked to healthcare and ongoing, you know, services. And they'll be collaborating very closely with our team and housing team so that we can continue to measure the effectiveness of this position and the program. And I also mentioned that with EHV, we're not quite sure what's going to happen with EHV at this time, but this case manager will also work with our clients to develop an exit strategy. So in case we do have to exit clients from the EHV program... So in case we do have to exit clients from the EHV program, we'll be working closely with this case manager to develop an exit strategy so that folks don't end up on the streets and we identify other housing options for them. The total cost for this position is $83,000, and the funding source will be the Section 8 admin dollars. So if council is to approve, and housing authority is to approve this pilot project, the next steps for us would be to amend our existing contracts with the county. We currently have two active contracts that we will have to go back and amend to provide them with an updated scope of work. We would have to develop an agreement with Gateways and execute that agreement so we can begin the program implementation. And then, of course, begin our community outreach, getting our teams connected, getting the police department and our housing teams connected with Gateways, and also with the clients to start enrolling them in some of these services that are available. So I think that's it. And our recommendation today is to approve the pilot project with Gateways Hospital for the residential care beds for a contract amount not to exceed $813,000, to accept both the Measure A and the Measure H funds, $347,979 in Measure A funds, and $382,021 for Measure H, and also to appropriate the Local Solutions Fund. And lastly, to allocate $83,000 from the Section 8 fund balance to support this pilot project. That was a mouthful, but that is our recommendation. And with that, I'll end my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. And the team is also available today if you have any questions for them.
Yes, thank you very much for the presentation. Councilmember Osatirian.
Thank you for the thorough presentation, and thank you for bringing this to us. I can't believe that we haven't had mental health services at the forefront all these years. And so we all know that this is much needed in the community. People are not well, and all you have to do is just look at social media, how well we're not doing. And so I, I know that last time you brought forth the homeless count report from this last time, you were noting a couple of gaps. One was families with children who are living in their cars. And then specifically, when we were talking about the Essentia Center, I think there was some conversations also there about families with children not being placed in the same facilities as just individuals, because the needs are different and, you know, whether or not they have substance abuse issues and so forth. What would the specifics of this look like? Would it be, could we target a certain demographic based on the gaps that you've shown to us before? And more so, I think, I also, one of the stark numbers I remember was 78% of the youth that came through were children that were coming from households with domestic violence as part of your report. And so can you speak to the details of who would qualify for this, or if we have an opportunity to, you know, designate to certain groups?
Absolutely, Chair Osatirian. With this specific pilot project, our goal is to really target who we see daily on the streets. And we do tend to see more individuals who are unhoused for longer periods and who are struggling with both mental health and substance use. Usually, they go hand in hand, sometimes when we... So with this particular pilot project, we would like to start there. However, this isn't to say that we don't have a great need for homeless families, unhoused families, and other target populations. I know that in speaking with Gateways for the past few months, we've, you know, connected, and I have an opportunity to get to see some of the work that they do. Gateways is also experienced in working with unhoused youth and families, adolescent, children. So there are opportunities there to also bring online other projects that could potentially serve those populations and those groups. With this particular project, we want to try this out with the homeless individuals in our community, the ones that we know about, that have known about some for like a decade, that haven't been able to get connected to the mental health services. But this is definitely not to say that we don't have a need for DV programs. One of the things that we want to do is, with the use of the Measure A and Measure H, we would like to streamline and allocate the funding to this project, given the amounts that we receive. We figure if we combine this amount, it would, it would serve a greater purpose if we bring this project online. Now, we also have HAP funds that are coming in from the state. We would like to focus those HAP dollars on the unhoused families and also DV. How can we increase our transitional housing programs and our rapid rehousing programs tied to workforce for our DV families? There is definitely a great need, but with our outreach teams right now, they're really struggling to find placement for the chronically homeless population that needs a bit more intensive case management and a higher level of care. I hope I answered that question.
And would they be serving Glendale residents that fell homeless, or just individuals that come seeking assistance in Glendale? Because those are two different things.
Right. We would be working very closely with Gateways and our outreach teams to identify the clients that we know of here in Glendale, that we have actually worked with for quite some time, and now we'll be able to provide this resource to them. And it'll be readily available when they're ready to go. Because sometimes clients are ready to accept the help, but it takes us a while to be able to connect them to the residential care treatment beds or to the services. We lose them. So with the support of Gateways, we'll have that direct connection. And, you know, within, I believe, 72 hours, they will be assessed. We will have a game plan to transition those folks off the streets and into residential care.
Okay. And then lastly, on the mental health caseworker, you noted 25. They would be only working with those 25 individuals, or there's opportunity for them to help close gaps for mental health referrals? The reason that I ask this, that I know that our Glendale Police Department, as an example, has a substance abuse, mental health case manager that I believe is part-time. And then we have someone, for example, at the libraries. But, you know, in trying to bring these pieces together, I also know the great need and the runaround that people are, when they try to seek mental health, it looks like the services are there or substance abuse programs. And then when you start going in, I know I've had some cases with community members that asked for assistance for family members, and it really feels like you need somebody to hold your hand through the process because they're not as easily accessible as it may seem.
Yes, I do agree with that. And I think with Gateways, because they are the trained professionals, this mental health case manager, I mean, this is what they do day in and day out. So the 25 households will be served through the full-time case manager. However, the ECM program that I talked about, the Enhanced Care Management Program, Gateways will actually be open to enrolling anyone who needs the service. So this is in addition to the ECM component.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Harginian.
Great presentation. I'm just need a little clarity on Slide 11. Is this the one individual, mental health and substance use case manager? Is it one individual?
That is correct.
Any other questions from colleagues? Any calls, or?
Mayor, I have no cards or callers on this item. No cards, no callers.
Any discussion on the item?
So just to be clear, we have, in the beginning of the presentation, there is an admin for $87,000, right? And then at the end, we have a request for funding for $83,000. What are, what's the difference between the two? So we're going to have two extra positions?
The $87,000 in admin, that's actually currently supporting existing staff. So we have Measure A admin and Measure H admin. And right now, that funding is tied to staff that is currently serving as project managers for these programs. So the Section 8 admin fund is a separate piece that'll bring online that mental health and substance abuse case manager. We can't use the $87,000 because we are currently utilizing that funding to support my team currently, my existing staff.
And this contract is about almost $800,000. How are the payments made? I mean, is it based on services they provide on a monthly basis, or they get a lump sum from the beginning and provide services?
Councilmember Garbietian, it will, it will not be paid in advance, so it will be pay-as-we-go. So Gateways will invoice the city based on, for example, the number of clients they serve. We will get a statement of work, you know, each month. We'll see and track progress. In fact, we will be speaking with the Gateways team to figure out a tracking process. As you all know, we utilize the Homeless Management Information System, HMIS, to keep track of all the clients we serve. So we will be discussing what is the best way and best approach to keep track of the individuals that we are serving in partnership with Gateways. We will be having quarterly reports that will be due to the city and to the county. So we'll be tracking progress in this program and pay-as-we-go.
And currently, we don't have this, we're not offering this service? How did we operate all these years with Essentia in place? And what my other question is, this funding from Measure A and Measure H, if it's not used for this purpose, can it be used for other purposes, like a voucher for hotel vouchers or housing, or temporary housing?
Sure. So the funding can be utilized for different types of programs, which include like a hotel non-congregate sheltering program. However, the county is really big on putting the funds towards residential care treatment beds, whether it's inpatient or outpatient care, because that is an area in our community that we see as a really high need, especially for our unhoused population. We have looked into bringing in a lot of support. I've often talked about our contract with Didi Hirsch and how for the past few years we haven't been able to refer clients to Didi Hirsch, our local mental health provider, because they're at capacity. We work with Essentia to make connections through DMH, Department of Mental Health, and DHS. However, we've seen kind of longer waits because of the number of clients that they're serving. So that's why we have been working hard, especially the last three years, to secure a contract such as this one. We just haven't had the opportunity until now. So, short answer is, we have had referrals through DMH, but this would, Gateways would serve as a bridge. So it would help expedite those placements.
And that $400 a day times five individuals is $2,000 a day. Within a year, it's $730,000. Is that how you calculate this?
Right. So it could serve more than, of course, it's five beds, but we could serve any way, I'm thinking, at least minimum of 30 to 40, because every individual is different, right? Their needs are different. So one individual might stay for up to 30 days. Another individual might have to exit within two weeks.
That's what I was going to ask, because this is a big chunk of money for only five individuals. I think maybe for the future, we can word it differently so we would understand. It's not only for five people. It's just five beds that many, multiple people can use it. And what, what does that $400 include? Is it shelter, food, services, mental health services? What kind of services?
Yes, I actually visited Percy Village last week. I had a chance to tour the facility and get to see the work that the team does at Gateways onsite. They have three warm meals a day, so they cook meals for up to 136 individuals. Usually, they're at 80% capacity. So they cook meals onsite. They also have medication onsite, so clients are able to get connected to their meds daily. They have mental health counseling, treatment, and also substance use treatment onsite. They have a wide range of services. So this, I know it seems like a lot of money, but when you look at the services that are tied to those beds, it's, it's very reasonable. They do get treatment daily, so.
No, I understand. I appreciate that. Because, you know, when it's only mental health services, it's really difficult to track down who got what. And since you have monthly or quarterly reports, I'm more comfortable with it, you know? We had $25 billion that state spent and this kind of services, and at the end, they didn't know where the money went. But I appreciate the report, and I think this is a noble thing to do, and hopefully we get more funding to serve more people.